Good evening. I'm Eden Winthimer, First of luck woman. I'm joined by selectmen Steve Hall and selectperson Amanda Thompson. Today is September 25th. The time is 6:33 PM and I called this Port of Slickman meeting to order. First on the agenda is public comment. I don't know if there's any online. I don't see any. And there's no one in person. So we'll move on to correspondence. Our first correspondence is from Eversource. They sent out a notice saying if there's anyone struggling to pay bills, gas or electric, which we are struggling because we get calls for it at our social services. But there is a number of programs you can call with Eversource. You can visit eversource.com/billhelp or you can call Eversource at 800-286-2828. They'll offer protection from service shut-off, home energy solutions, their program operation fuel, low income discount rates, and flexible payment plans and other plans that they offer. Next, we have a notice from Farmington Valley Health. It was a public health alert for mosquito bites. But then I actually received something today from the Farmington Valley Health and it says a bit of good news on the mosquito front. There have been no positive mosquito pools for either WNV.
Snow virus.
Yes, or EE.
Eastern equine encephalitis.
Thank you. In our Farmington testing site for the past three weeks. In addition, human biting mosquitoes are on the decline with cooler weather and no rain. Our recommendations for personal protection are still prudent, although risk is defining. And you can go to the Farmington Valley Health district site, fdhd.org to look at their public health alerts. Next, I had kind of in a different order, something from Connecticut DEEP regarding bears. They have a live bear wise resource. And if anyone has a bear in their yard and there's immediate concern with that bear in the yard, you can call 860-424-3333 or you can also go to portal.ct.gov/deep and just enter bears as a keyword and it'll bring up a whole site on bears and fact sheets and frequently asked questions and just bear reports, tips for keeping them out of your yard, how to get very resistant trash barrels, which I know Paine's offers those also for an additional cost. So that's the bears. Next is America 250. I'm not sure how many people are aware that the United States will mark 250th anniversary on July 4th, 2026. And America 250, the CT Commission is charged with providing assistance to municipalities for the development of programs, projects, and activities pertaining to the American Revolution. So there's towns are beginning to form committees and different organizations in the towns are forming their own type of celebration for the 250th. You can visit ct250.org/ local if you want to see what's going on in different communities. And I'll be reaching out to the Historical Society and our town clerk and just different departments and different organizations in town to see what and if there's anything that you'd like to do to participate. If anyone's willing to be on a committee, we reach out. Next are just some community events I wanted to bring up that are coming up. They were in Talk Turkey, East Grand Bay Emergency Services with the Grand Bay Ambulance, the Police Department, and the Fire Department are having a pancake breakfast on October 5th, Saturday, October 5th from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM. There's a townwide leaf collection on November 16th. That's ahead. We'll still have more meetings before then, but I just wanted to mention that people are asking. Stop under the lights is Friday, October 18th at the high school. That starts at, I think, 5:15. The girls kick off at 5:15. We have a shredded day coming up on Saturday, October 5th from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM in the Town Hall parking lot. This is for East Grand Bay residents. You're welcome to bring three boxes or bags, household paper items for no charge. We have the East Grand Bay Farmers Market. The last Friday of the event is this Friday, September 27th from 3:30 to 6:30 PM in the liquor cabinet parking lot. So we hope everyone can come to that and support our local farmers. Okay, next is the East Grand Bay Wellness Fair. This is put on by Commission on Aging and it's on October 7th, Monday, October 7th from 3:30 to 6:00 PM. It's for seniors, for caregivers, and for family members. You can also come in for a free blue shot. I also want to mention, this is put on by Commission on Aging and that Commission on Aging's next monthly meeting, which is October 1st, it's a Tuesday, their meeting starts at 7:00 PM. And at 6:30 PM, we're going to have a dedication of the new gazebo that's behind the senior community center. We were bequested money from residents and we're going to be dedicating the gazebo in her honor because that's what the Commission on Aging requested to do with the money or chose to do with the money. So it'll be a dedication for Bea Adams at 6:30 PM on October 1st. There'll be refreshments and we have a plaque and all that. So we hope to see some people there. All right, moving on to the minutes from August 28th, I'll just need motion to.
I'll make a motion to accept the meetings as presented. Minutes as presented.
All right, others in favor say aye. Okay, next on the agenda is the tax collector report. Oh, nope, I skipped over old business. So old business is back office shared services opportunities. I had a conversation with our school superintendent about just capacity problems we're having at All Grove and Seymour and throughout the school system. And they wanted to resurrect, she wanted, and the Board of Ed wanted to resurrect the conversation about perhaps a new elementary school in the future. So we're just kind of starting that conversation. It was bought up again at Port of Finance last week and I did let them know that I would talk about it tonight. And they're talking about perhaps at the Seymour School site, one of the thoughts was turning that school into a K to six somehow, either an addition on top, an addition beside it, I don't know, the room or the space or anything, but that was one of the possibilities. Office spaces at a, is an all-time shortage now with Town Hall, with Board of Ed, with Public Works, and we're trying to find everyone office space. So we were hoping to maybe turn All Grove into something new someday. That was just, that's just a beginner boilerplate conversation. So we'll accept ideas and thoughts and the Board of Finance is aware that we're going to start the conversation. So just wanted to put that out there. But we can't do without each other's support. So I told them I would bring it up here. Next on the agenda is new business. We have the tax collector report and refunds. So the tax collector report for August was a very busy month. We took in $12,196,000 and some change in tax for this fiscal year so far. Our overall collection rate for the 23 grand list is 52.61%. Regarding sewers, we've collected $14,819 in past due sewer bills during the month of August, which is great. And the monthly payment we received from our collection company, ANRG, put us over the 100,000 mark since we started using them in January of 2022. So that collection company has collected about $101,380. So I'll just need a motion to approve this.
I'll make a motion to approve the tax collector's August report.
Second that. All right, others in favor say aye. Okay, we have a bunch of refunds. So I'll start. 45 Russell Road. And 45 Russell Road, East Grand Bay LLC, $450. Dorothy BB Martin, 30 Talkeet Range for $28.08. David and Christine Bouchard for $16.56, six service lane. Linda Bukovich, 3 Miller Road for $25.09. This one is CoreLogic for 109 Holcomb Street, $3,379.32. Danielle Delpha, 8 Heritage Farm Road for $422.57. DPM Electrical Contractors, 201 North Main Street for $51.35 over pay taxes. EAN Holdings LLC. And these are for multiple properties or multiple cars. $2,930.01, they're a leasing company, please. Enterprise rent a car. Elizabeth Glidden, Wyden, apologize, 5 Fletcher Street, Palmer, Mass. And this is for an automobile as well, $31.95. Hyundai Lease Tagling Trust, $231.85. Another one for Hyundai Lease Tagling Trust for $418.39. Julian Wesley Martin, 8 Country Club Lane for $21.25. Morgan Matil, 195 North Main Street for $971.18. Brian McDonald, 71 Kimberly Road for $15.40. Gerard Gerald and Susan Morel for Pleasant View, $34.60. VCFS Auto Leasing, $294.10. BW Credit Leasing, $176.42. Dana Zelinski, 199 North Main Street for $128.37. This is the total if you want to make a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the tax refunds in the amount of $9,626.40 as presented.
Second that. All right, others in favor, on tax refunds, say aye. All right, thank you for that. All right, next on the agenda is the police report, 6B for August. There were eight motor vehicle accidents, 19 alarms, one disturbance, one DWI, three fire calls, one fraud, one larceny, 25 menoposis, one emergency committal, 13 suspicious incidents, 36 traffic stops, 70, excuse me, 710 patrol stops, and a total of 944 calls for service. Of those traffic stops, 33 were warnings and four were citations. One of those was from a parking violation event, which isn't categorized as traffic stop. That's from our residential form. Next on the agenda is our ARPA update and we have an ARPA request. ARPA, I think I wrote it. Our balance to date is $56,253.67. There were some salaries that weren't used fully that got put back in because I think last month the total was 30-something thousand. So some social security payments and things and salary went back into the balance. So it's $56,253.67. And we do have a fundraiser, oh, excuse me, I don't know why I wrote that. We do have a request for the ARPA funds for the playscape at Grand Park. East Grand Bay Parks and Rec is requesting the total remaining, except the change not in there, for a new playscape at East Grand Bay Farms. Everyone's aware that it's in quite a bit of just repair and needs replacement. And that's why I wrote the word fundraising. The balance, they're expecting it to cost around 90,000 and they're starting, they'd like to start a fundraising campaign and to see with businesses and with residents to try to meet the total cost. Are they expanding it to something bigger? Because they took the tractor down already, I believe, right? Because that was. Yes.
That was a rough shape.
They have, they're getting quotes on three different ones. It'll be, I believe, somewhat larger. Yep. And they're working on getting their street votes. So, but what they had, the last quote they had was 90,000. So they're going to be, they're thinking about a, and already in the works of a fundraising campaign. Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the $56,253 for the Parks and Recreation for a playscape at East Grand Bay Farms.
I'll second the motion.
All right, others in favor, say aye. Aye. Awesome. Thank you for that. Next on the agenda is appointments and resignations. We have one appointment to youth services and this is, I'll read the email. At our youth services meeting last night, the board voted unanimously to request that you appoint Ashley Alexander as a member to the Juvenile Reboot Board. So it'll be for JRV.
Hold on. And I'll make a motion to appoint Ashley Alexander as a member of the Juvenile Reboot Board.
I'll second that. Thank you. And we received a really nice letter from Ashley just talking about her background and things. So. Yeah, she'll be a great addition.
No doubt. Yep. Yep.
And, okay, and then we'll, oh, okay.
All in favor.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Well, my board. And then we have the resignation of John Webster, unfortunately, from Mission on Aging. He was a real asset. He just has a lot going on at the moment, so we should understand. So he'll be resigning and I'll just need a motion for that.
I'll make a motion to accept John Webster's resignation.
Those in favor, aye. Unfortunately, rise and he's resigning. Okay, next on the agenda is proposed land, East Grand Bay owned land sale. That was approached over, it's probably going on over a year now, from a resident who wished to purchase an adjoining property. And then within that, it might even have been a year and a half. I have to look back, so I'm just, we're getting moving on this now. And then in the last year, received two other requests for two other properties that people were interested in purchasing. So after talking with the town attorney and the proper process to do this, I'm now presenting it. So I'll be posting these and just letting you guys just make be aware that I'll be posting these properties for sale on the town website and people interested in purchasing them can submit offers by Wednesday, October 16th at 2:00 PM and that'll be posted on the town website. So you'll see all the conditions to it and the property addresses. So those addresses are 205 Turkey Hills Road, which is the town landfill, 32 Spoonville Road, which is the rear portion of the property that the, that the first shop is on now. So the first shop property is a long, very long rectangle, so it'll be the back portion. And it's 14,567 square feet actually, property. And the other doesn't have a number address, but it's labeled E/ S Holcomb Street. It's the property directly across the street from Holcomb Brook or the entrance of Ezekiel Drive on Holcomb Street. So that's a one acre parcel. And if there's questions about the properties and the usage of the properties, those can be directed to the building department. But just give me until like 8:30 tomorrow morning to update the building department on that so they have proper answers. But this will get posted sometime tomorrow when the, when the master posts it. Do you need to vote on that or? We don't need to vote on that. Okay.
Motion only.
Because that will go. Oh, yeah. So, thank you. So once the offers have been submitted on October 5th, October 16th, they'll be sealed offers, those will be opened, and then we'll schedule a public hearing to present, the offer, an offer will be chosen and that offer will be presented at a Port of Slickman meeting, at a public hearing, Port of Slickman meeting. And then we'll do the public hearing and then we'll vote to move the sale to a town meeting. So at the next town meeting, we'll have these land sales. So they'll have to get approved by the town. And just so, for complete transparency, I did reach out to Public Works at Hubbard, who's been here forever, and a couple staff members who've been here and just asked while we're at it, are there any other properties in town that they'd be willing to? And these are properties, they're like, yes, sell these, fine with them. Are there any other properties? And they thought for probably a good month and just didn't come up with any other viable properties. So that's that. Next on the agenda is a capital request. So I think I gave you guys two for the Fire Department. One had already been approved by us, but the Board of Finance didn't vote on it, just it was a tough time when they were doing it. So that was the 19,000 for the PPE. So that's been approved by us already. The next one that they'd like to go to the Board of Finance is $8,000 for the purchase of equipment for engine 208. That was to equip the engine they purchased. And I have the quotes in here from Fire Maddox.
I'll make a motion to send the $8,000 CIP request to be accepted. Is that what we're looking for?
Yes. I'll second that. Okay, others in favor say aye. 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 All right, thank you. And the next is a request from, it wasn't very clear on this, this is from Lori Carlson from Public Buildings to repair, I did talk about it briefly at the Board of Finance meeting, to repair the, that entrance of the Town Hall. And I don't know what direction that is, but, okay, the north entrance, that one? Okay. The north entrance?
No, west.
That's west, right?
Yeah.
Northwest.
Oh, okay.
West, right next to the.
Yeah, that's where it's at.
Right. I guess it's, it's very, it's not safe to use that door, so we try not to use it. There's like stuff falling. So it's, it's just decaying and.
It's time.
And the whole, the pediment, the, from outside is in really bad shape. So that's, we have a quote for labor materials, fasteners, adhesives, installation, and all for $13,730.
I'll make a motion to approve the sum of $13,728 to repair the west side entrance of the Town Hall.
All right, others in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay, and next on the agenda, 6G is the conversation of the plan of conservation and development. So I received a memo from our town planner and director of economic development. She said the East Grand Bay Plan of Conservation and Development is due for renewal and adoption no later than 2026. As planner, I recommend kicking off the start of the POCD process no later than this coming January 2025. This will provide adequate time to facilitate the appropriate public outreach, visioning sessions, implementation strategies, and community planning. As Taike Planning and Policy Group is already contracted with the town for planning and economic development services, we could amend our contract to include an extra work addendum to assist in completing the POCD. This amendment would be for services specifically related to the POCD up to $50,000. This fee would include the following. A dedicated website for the public to be involved in the process and a dedicated information page of the status of the project. All project documents, surveys, et cetera, will be in one place and be specific to the town's process. Meetings with boards and commissions specific to the relevant section of the POCD for feedback from the last 10 years and goals for the next 10 years. Community engagement in the form of interactive meetings and online surveys. Stakeholder outreach to include organizations such as the Trap Rap, Bridge Land Conservancy, and other advocacy programs. And, excuse me. Visioning and goal setting. Preparation and writing of the actual plan in accordance with the state statute. Baseline review of the existing data and plans. Taike is already familiar with the town's data profile and the POCD as we staff PCC and inland metrons. Data update and assessment, drafts and final document preparation, assisting with the statutory adoption of the POCD. Full rewrites of the POCD with the above outlines, though if bid with average $75,000 to $90,000 for town of East Grand Bay size and for a full rewrite, which is what is currently needed. And she said that for more information. So I did reach out to our town attorney because we do have a contract with Taike and we have, because we have a, normally this process would require a sealed bid or a proposal, but he said the Board of Slickman could waive the requirement for a sealed bid based on ongoing relationship Taike has with the town and more importantly, Taike's familiarity with the town. So there is a section in here that says that they can do additional services. Additional compensation to the client assigned additional services to his consultant during the terms of this agreement, the consultant should be compensated based on effective hourly rate schedule that they're, they're willing to do for $50,000.
So it saves us 25 to 40 grand.
So what they're saying is this normally costs. Normally the cost is that. They would do it for decent, we're already here. Right, yeah. Yeah, this world bursting. And she's familiar with our current POCD and has some recommended changes already. And.
Almost sounds like a sole source provider already. They're ingrained in the town, they have all the information. It's seamless and nothing gets lost or there cracks due to unfamiliarity.
And I'll be. She's starting this a year ahead of time to make sure that it's down on time. Yep, planning the, planning all the meetings and the information sessions. I'm presenting the Board of Finance, the five-year capital plan, and I have it in there now. I'll just make sure it's in the timely fashion and so we can pay for it. I thought that was a really nice offer though.
We're looking for a motion to waive the sealed bid because I think that's a no-brainer. So I'll definitely make a motion to waive the sealed bid process and appoint Taike as the assistant with the POCD.
Second that. Okay, others in favor of waiving the sealed bids? Aye.
Aye. Yeah, this is one of the most important documents of the town. Tonight we have a vision for our future, so.
Yep, that's great. Kind of excited about. All right, next on the agenda is public comments. No one's in the room. I don't believe I see any online.
I see, Sandy, I see you online, so I'm just gonna ask if you want to give a plug about Empty Bowls because that's coming up.
Hi, Amanda, thanks. Yes, Empty Bowls is October 5th from 11:30 to 1:30 at the community center and you can buy tickets online at our website, friendtofreteg.com.
Perfect, thank you.
That'll be great. So you can come have pancakes in the morning with the Fire Department.
Oh, no, I don't know how I missed.
You can hang out and do a little walk on the Doreen's Nature Trail and then you can go have lunch with Empty Bowls.
Perfect.
Right, yep. And the walk is at 10:30.
Perfect, and if there's any other events that I probably missed, they're in, just look in Talk Turkey, they're all in there. Last month's Talk Turkey, it's online and in Town Hall. But the Empty Bowl supports our friend-to-friend and our food pantry for the town, right? Yep. All right, with that, I'll just need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, that, adjourned at 7:00 PM.